I call the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Aransas Pass, August 24th at 6:00 PM. To order.
Let's rise for the invocation, Vicki.
Dear Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you, my Father, for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. Thank you for your protection and thank you for the country that we live in, my Father. I pray your guidance upon us, the city council, that we make the right decisions for our city. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we go to the board and commissions department. The Aransas Pass Crime Control and Prevention District.
Well, I make a motion, we appoint Donald Bowles to the Arans pass crime control and prevention district.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we go to the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request. If this caution is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we go to Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I declare a public hearing open for the purposes of taking up the request of Alfredo S. Orozco Jr. For a conditional use permit to operate a bar at 1152 South Commercial in a general business district. The planning and zoning commission has previously heard this matter and on August the 14th approved and recommended your approval. Is Mr. Orozco present? Would you come forward, please, sir? Just right there, Mr. Orozco. I assume you were at the planning and zoning meeting?
Yes, I did.
And are you aware of the conditions that they put on this permit?
Yes.
And are you, are you okay with those things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you been in the bar business before?
No, but I'm a musician all my life, so I've been, I know the business part of it. I'm an electrical contractor, so I know what it, what it takes to be in business. And so, in the bar business, I'm not going to treat it any different than what I'm doing now with my business. I must, I deal with the Texas license, with my contractor's license. So, you know, I bear all the rules. And in regards to the bars, different, but I've been, like I said, I'm a musician on weekends and I've been, I've been around it all my life, so I know what it is.
Okay, and I think one of the things they talked about was for you to build a fence to screen the property?
Yes.
That's okay?
Yes. I already took care of the back part. I don't know up to how far I need to go, up to the building where it ends, is where I stopped. So, I don't know if I have to continue going, you know, the rest of it. So, I have to get with the, what was in charge.
Yeah, right, okay. Members of the council, have any questions or comments?
I have a question for chief. I know it was a bar previously.
So, is it where the Salty Sailor was, kind of recessed?
Well, I'm...
Last pass.
The last pass.
Yeah. At the ditch, at the George Ransom?
Yeah, right there at Deverie and Commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a lot of complaints from neighbors. The number one complaint we get is noise complaints at that location. As far as the bar being in compliance and stuff, we've had problems with, like, ownership in the past. So, really, that comes down to the owners. And, you know, that is a correctable behavior, and we work with our bars really closely, getting compliance. But noise coming from bars has been a constant nuisance to the residents around that area. That would be my only concern because it's inherent with bars, you have live or loud music and stuff like that.
And I am aware of that. I never went to that bar when it was previously owned by the previous owner. I do know that when I walked into that building, there was broken windows. I see a lot of holes in the, in the, in the doors. So, I'm going to take every precaution that I can eventually to make that building concealed. I'm going to control the, the volume. I have a DC, a DCB reader that I'm going to take into effect and it, and also comply with, you know, the city ordinance and also respect the residents around the area. So, I will take every precaution that I can to control that.
And I, and I think taking those measures, he sounds very proactive, taking those measures should help combat it. I think some of the times we had issues where they would open the doors, maybe because it got too hot or something.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, the ACs were not working properly, so they would leave the doors open. And I already taking care of the ACs.
Awesome. And, and if we have any issues, we're going to work with you. Our ultimate goal is to keep you operating and making success.
Well, prior to opening, what I'm going to do, I'm going to turn on the volumes on, on the sound equipment and just see how far I'm going to take a drive and run the surround just to make sure that, you know, once I reach a certain volume, I'll understand more better what's going on in that building. But for now, I'm kind of, I'm still in the dark just as well as, you know. But I know what, previously what happened in that building, I think it was just bad management, in my opinion.
I agree with you.
And, like I said, I'm, I'm making a lot of revisions and a lot of improvements in that building.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am? Oh, okay.
You don't want him to open the bar?
I'm getting a Hawaii vacation after all of this.
Finally.
In other words, we better improve it from this point on.
The only thing I wanted to mention that there are going to have live bands on the weekend.
Good.
So, it's a normal thing, you know, to be a little bit loud and all that. So, but like he was mentioning, he is going to get a special equipment to centralize the loudness of the, of the building itself. The other thing is that, as far as the fencing, I had spoken to Catherine. She had indicated up to where, up to what point we need to put the fence and all that. Previously, we had already closed it in, but after talking to her, the previous owner had actually done it wrong. They hadn't gone all the way to the designated point of the other venue. So, that's already been taken care of.
I think they helped y'all get rid of that fence anyway, before y'all got there, right?
Yes. Everything was out.
That's pretty much what I saw.
And just, just one thing, if I might add, because what we do tell residents to do if there's a persistent problem is we do invite them to come in and sign a complaint to municipal court. So, if there is a noise problem, if the officer verifies it, he becomes a witness to that complaint and they can come in and sign a complaint. That is a possibility. I can't rule that out, but I just want you guys to understand that as well. But like I said, we, we work very hard with our businesses like y'all. We know that that's your business. We want to keep you in compliance and help you be successful.
And another thing, it's going to be a non-smoking establishment.
Oh, I love it.
Oh, thank goodness.
We're trying to, you know, we're trying to pick up a little bit what Corpus has already put into place, also Portland. So...
You had to throw away your clothes after you walked out there.
Well, we had to banalize that building because it was really smoked in and all that.
What?
So, we really worked very hard on it. So, you're all welcome to come. And it is going to be open for seven days. So, it's going to be from midnight till, I mean, from noon till 2:00. And eventually, within a six-month period, we want to start the grill also because it is a bar and grill. But right now, we're starting little by little.
All right. Good luck, yeah.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
In favor of the council?
Do we vote on it?
Yeah.
Do we make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to grant a conditional use permit to Alfredo Orozco for operating a bar at 1152 South Commercial?
With the conditions recommended by the planning and zoning commission?
Yes, with the conditions recommend, recommended by the planning and zoning commission.
Right.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, next is a public hearing on two plats. The first being plat, uh, block 711, lots 1, 2, and the north 20 feet of lot 3. Property is located on Bay Street. Kat, you want to address this?
Good evening. Both plats are, have been voted for recommendation for approval by the planning and zoning. Both meet all the city standards. One is located on Bay Street for a residence and one is located on Commercial for a business. They're both being replatted so that construction permits can be issued. But we received, did all the public notices, received no objections to either. And again, they meet all the state and the city requirements.
Well, the, the second flat that you've already addressed is a piece of property located on North Commercial Street between Lot Avenue and Wheeler Avenue. And this has been approved already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so both flats are okay?
Yes, sir.
Anyone on the council have any questions or comments? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? If not, I declare this public hearing closed.
What would be the favor of the council? I make a motion that we approve both plats.
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Next is a public hearing on proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance, Part 4, Section 19, procedures for changes and amendments. Kat?
These proposed amendments were brought about by concerns a citizen brought forth last month. Section 19 of the zoning ordinance pertains to our public notice requirements for any changes regarding plating or zoning. It's all, what, as it currently reads, it is in compliance with the local government code. However, it doesn't, there is some ambiguity. The proposed amendments are simply to provide more clarity. The local government code does not require for zoning text amendments that we do mailed notices. But it was understandable, the concern the citizen brought forward, based on the way it currently reads. Most cities will have a table, when I went to look at the different zoning ordinances for Portland, for Corpus Christi, for San Antonio, they'll have a table that outlines which type of notices, which type of zoning and plating procedures require as a mailed notice as well as a newspaper notice. This text amendment just does that without a table and just specifies that everything, as far as zoning goes, excepting the text amendment, does require the mailed notices. Minor plats are not mentioned in this because those are handled by a section of the code of ordinances. They're approved administratively and do not require public notice.
Any questions or comments by the council? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
Favor of the council? I make a motion, we approve the amendments to Section 19 of the zoning ordinances.
Part 4.
Part 4.
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Right, good evening, council and mayor. The next six items we have on here are all tax resale properties. I'm going to go ahead and join them all together because staff recommendation is to deny the selling of these properties, mainly because they're all located in the flood areas down by the harbor and the city is working on acquiring those properties for our flood mitigation plan that we're doing for future. And we don't recommend selling them because some of these, if you look on Google, you'll see that there's a huge pond already there. So, it's, you can't really build on these lots. And so, staff recommendations for all six of these is to deny, sell.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the city staff to deny the request for sale on these properties.
Let me, let me suggest it to you also, in that motion, authorize the city manager to proceed with whatever is required to acquire those properties for the city, with the, talk to the school, school district and the county.
Okay, I'm in the motion to include that.
You got it.
And we'll record it.
Start it on.
The city did recently adopt the Aransas County Flood Plane Management Plan. And one of the provisions that the city did commit to is acquiring open spaces for flood plane mitigation. And that is in particular where we've been looking at.
Right, okay, thank you.
I know before we, before I go ahead and study, am I going to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, second.
Can I have a discussion on that?
The reason why, so, we had talked about it in the past, when these properties were coming up for us to keep them from going out for bid, what steps are we taking for that?
We've already contacted them directly and they're going to start sending them directly to us before they go out for bids.
Okay, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item we have on the agenda, we've been meeting more and more with the school board president and trying to get more cooperation between the two entities. This next one is a program that we want to start establishing with, with city administrators, mentoring students at the school. What this program would entail, it's once a month for an hour. In that month, we would go to the grades from third to fifth grade and we were a mentor. Students are more at risk, they're, don't have that support at home or are failing classes and that kind of helps the kids open up a little bit more and help them out. And then the second hour of, of the month would be with high school students. And this would be a volunteer program for the high school students. And we would help them look at different career opportunities, college applications, student loan applications, and just get them moving in that progress so that, that when they graduate, they have already a plan in place to continue since they are our future and they're the ones that'll be sitting here someday. So, we want to make sure they get the proper direction of where to go. So, right now, we were asking for your blessing to continue with the program. If approved, I would be attending the, the next school board meeting in September and presenting to them and coming to agreement with them.
So, is there a particular curriculum that's going to go along with this program?
No, really.
Or, or...
This is just going over to the schools and it'll be the administrative staff from the city. And we would be just like a big brother, big sister program.
Okay, that's what I was, that would, yeah. That would be a great thing.
Definitely, yeah.
I do know that when we got the early act first night program started, I went to the school board, not to the school board meeting, to, but to individuals. And the way that I got it to be able to happen is that I had to talk to the principal of the school and make the principal accept the program so she could put it in action. So, in those schools, we really need to go after the principals of those schools to make sure that it happens.
Yes, and the, the next day would be get the approval from the school board.
I don't think we needed that.
Well, since it's, they're the ones in charge of the schools, we got to get their approval and then it'll be the principals that we'd be meeting with. Because we have to have their approval before we step foot in the schools.
Okay, that's not what they told me, but that's right.
All right. Well, good luck with this.
Yes, good luck.
Something that comes about.
Definitely needed. Do we need to make a motion on this?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the mentoring program, city administrators mentoring students program.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item on the agenda is also dealing with the school district. As you all know, right now, they're beginning construction of the new school and then right after the new gym at the high school. They are requesting that we waive or reduce the fees for construction permits. The total right now is $6,718.
$6,000?
$60,000, my bad. Staff recommendation is not to waive the fees, but in turn, the city purchased furniture for the school, for the new school since that wasn't budgeted for.
How, how do they miss budgeting for all the fixtures and furniture? That's like building a restaurant, not putting a stove and tables in there.
Yeah, they, they said they have some money. Yeah, they said they have some monies available, but I don't think it's enough for all the furniture purchases that they will require, and staff recommendation, I guess it would be to, instead of waiving the fees, the city using that money to purchase the furniture for the school.
They didn't put enough money for a library either, from what I understand.
Didn't, did I read some, okay, school board president agrees with this recommendation?
Yes, we, that was one of the meetings we had, and we had to get their agreement on it first before we can bring it to y'all and make sure that they would be okay with us doing that, if y'all were to approve it, and they, they agreed to doing that in lieu of waiving the fines.
So just out of curiosity, so if we did not give the sixty thousand dollars for our furniture?
Yeah, we're gonna use the old one. Oh, the old furniture?
Okay.
And this would be the city purchasing the furniture, when the school's ready for it, we would go, we would work with them to go under their contracts that they use for the furniture, and then the city will purchase it.
That's a double whammy on the taxpayers, getting the, you know, we're already paying the school taxes, and they get the majority of the tax dollars, and then we turn around and buy, you know, buy the furniture. I don't know, I just, we need to go back, we need to go back to draw board on this one. You know, they've had, I think there's plenty of property that the school district owns that will never be used for a school, maybe they consider liquidating some of that stuff and getting it on tax rolls, and making it useful property.
Well, I think we should go ahead and, you know, because they've already paid the fees, right?
Yes, the fees have been paid.
They've already paid, yes. And I, I mean, it's just showing as far as extending an olive branch to the school, that's the way I'm looking at it, that we're willing to work with this, with the school? And I think it, it's going to require the school and the city to work together to meet the demands of the population, the growth, and if we help them improve, and we're improving also, I think it's gonna be a win-win for both. I agree with you as far as the tax rules, that's correct, but I think this is a gesture from the city to the school, that we're willing to work, we're gonna meet them halfway to help, to help them.
Let me ask a question if I might, is the amount of furniture that the city's gonna buy gonna be limited to this amount of money?
Yes, it would be to this amount of money.
Okay.
Do you know if that's enough money?
Like, no, not for a full school, but they'll get them the essentials that they need.
Okay.
Yeah, who's in charge of the planning for this stuff? I thought furnishing would be part of the package and the bond and all that stuff.
Yeah, they didn't, when they did their budgeting, I don't think they took into consideration any other furniture.
I think we need to just kind of hold off and just see if we come up with a better solution, like swapping property with the city or some, some piece of property they have, something, so the city gets something out of it, I just, I can't with clear conscience just write them a check for an omission on their part.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept this, is what I'm, I'm ready to, because I'm, I'm in favor of extending that olive branch to the school.
Do we have a second?
I, I second, but I absolutely agree with Billy, I think further, we do need to inquire further with the school district in getting some of the property that they own that they're never going to do anything with back on the tax rolls.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item we have on the agenda.
Wait a minute. Motion failed, if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly.
No here.
Nobody said. It's a no for me. I think we have to, have to work.
And a yes for you, and a yes for you?
A yes for me, yeah.
And a yes for you, Matt?
Yeah.
And a yes for me?
Okay.
The next item we have on the agenda is with the city health insurance. This year, once again, our insurance rates were going up with TML, they were going up twenty percent, so we went out for bids, and we got a lot of providers come in. We're still getting an increase, but it's down to a four percent. We've reviewed with, with staff, and staff has recommended to go with Humana, that's our best option, that has a better health package, and instead of a twenty percent increase, it would be a four percent increase. And we do have representatives here, if y'all have any questions for them.
Do the employees pay any part of this, or not?
For the employee themselves, the city covers it. If they have spouse and children, they pay their portion of it.
It's the benefits the, about the same as what we have under the TML plan?
Yes, the deductibles are pretty much the same. I think the co-pays for the, the prescription is gonna go, is ten dollars, when it was zero before, for the, the generic brand. And then Roland's here, he can elaborate a little bit more on it.
My name's Roland Barreda, and I'm, I guess the, the city employs me to, or based on the commissions for the program, just to, to review the health plans for you, and then we went out for bid, the, the mid-July, we sent invitations to all the major carriers, and we got back the, we got submissions from Aetna, Humana, Blue Cross, and United Healthcare. And so anyway, but to answer your question, there is, there is, there are a few variances, however, it's the major, they're, they're very minimal. Now, your max out of a pocket right now, one of, one of the, the good things is the max out of pocket that you have with TML is sixty-five hundred, and the maximum out of pocket now in the new plan is gonna be four thousand dollars. So there's a little bit of a step up in benefits, overall.
That's a deductible part.
Yeah, yeah. Once you have a deductible exposure, the maximum, that maximum that any employee will have out of their pockets is gonna be four thousand dollars.
We do have copies of the packets, if y'all wish to look at them, we can get you a printout or send you a PDF by email.
As long as it, you know, the, the benefits are about the same, like you said, it's not gonna be much change to the employees, that they're not gonna see like a major increase in price on any of the services that they use?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. In fact, I think in there's some of the benefits as well, yeah, there's, I'm, I'm looking like, for example, the, I'm a little bit off here. Okay, okay, I'm sorry, you're, you're absolutely correct. I, I was thinking of something else, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's, the only, the only variance that there might be is now, it's really, there's almost no such thing as generic and brand anymore, it just goes to a different tier, so prescriptions, because you might have a generic drug that's gonna be two hundred dollars nowadays. And so what happens is that Humana has a system with which they break it off into tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four, but we don't anticipate, we, we, we anticipate any minimal disruption if there would be any at all. And I, I could tell you that one of the challenges that, that we've had with TML is that they have a, they have, when, when they pay claims, they have a program that's called pursue and then pay. In other words, if somebody, if, if they feel like, let's say, for example, somebody was involved in an accident, well then, okay, I can see it's happened to somebody. If somebody's been involved in an accident, or it may have been a potential workers' comp claim, then TML is gonna send the employee or the individual questionnaires, and they're gonna want verification before they pay the claims. And Humana, and by the way, I have Mr. Bartman with me with Humana, he came to answer any questions as well that I may not be able to, but Humana has a pay and pursue policy, so they're gonna pay the claims first to ensure there's no disruption to the employee, and then if there's any subrogation required, whether it was a workers' comp claim, or it was an accident that somebody else's insurance may pick up, then they're gonna go after that later. So I, I think you'll find, we've, we've found in our experience, and I've, I've, I've been doing this for twenty-one years, I'm still dipping my toe in the water, so what is it, we've found that we've, we've got a real strong comfort level with Humana, and, and then how we work with them if we have any challenges with, with claims or whatever the issues are.
Will they still be able to use the same doctors?
Yes, pretty mu, very much, very much so. All the same doctors are in the network, Humana is very broad, Humana's network is very strong here in the coastal area, they're very strong nationwide.
Okay. So what would be the increase to the, and that would be just the twenty-nine thousand for us, for the city?
Yes, and then the employees, if they have a...
A spouse?
Yeah, they have a spouse, there's an increase, I think, of sixty dollars for the month, which would be thirty pay period, and that's pre-tax. And then if for, for children, an employee, I think it's a forty dollar increase, which, for the month, so it's, you know, twenty to thirty dollars a pay period before taxes that an employee will see different on their pay.
So if they have a, if they have a family, is it, is it spouse and children, so they're gonna have an increase of a hundred dollars?
Actually, for, for, there's an increase of about seventy-eight dollars for family coverage, however, because of the difference that you're gonna pay, because you're gonna pay about twenty-five dollars more, so you're looking at about, for family, if anybody that has family coverage, they're gonna pay about fifty dollars more a month.
Fifty more a month?
Yes, and you know, if I may add, one of the reasons that I think the staff overwhelmingly chose Humana is they have a comprehensive wellness program. Typically, wellness programs are very invasive, they require an individual to get blood work done, and basically, it's all based on getting your blood work done, finding out what your cholesterol is, you know, your glucose levels and all that, which is very important. However, they're typically, once you get that done, is trying to get the employees engaged after that. Just because I go and I'm gonna get an incentive to get this done, that doesn't mean I'm gonna go see my doctor. So, Humana has a comprehensive program called Go Through Sixty-Five, it's a points-based system, it's based on technology and an app, and with the app, there's ways for the employees to engage, where they have a Fitbit, it works with about seventy-five different apps, so that way, if they're engaged into the program, they start to earn points, and as they accumulate points, they qualify for gift cards for, through Amazon, through Lowe's, through Macy's, so that way, they're rewarded for healthy living. The other thing that comes along with the program is if the individual qualifies, it comes with six months of free Weight Watchers. It also has a program for, there's health coaches that are available. Now, the other benefit that I think the staff overwhelmingly, once again, chose Humana is that Humana has a unique program called Total Health, and what it is, is it's a, it's a unilateral contract, it's a, it's a three-year deal, unilateral meaning is that as long as you fulfill certain requirements, then Humana has to, Humana is promising something in return. And so typically, we do, you're, you're used to feeling this pinch every year, and there's a level of unpredictability, unpredictability about it as to what's the increase gonna be, and how are we gonna budget for that. Well, Humana has basically stated, based on what your loss ratios are, then we're gonna tell you today that this is how much your increase is gonna be. For example, I think your loss ratio, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sandra, was probably at about seventy-eight or eighty, and Humana, and, and, and TML came back with a twenty percent increase, and right now, on this Total Health program, if you'll pardon me while I go in, I'm probably giving you more information than you want, but...
I believe so.
Anyway, say for example, if you were in the same position, your increase would be no more than eight percent. If you have less than a seventy percent loss ratio, then your increase wouldn't be any more than four percent. In addition, based on the participation that your employees have on the wellness program, and basically what we do is they offer what they call engagement reports, and we can see how many people have accumulated points. So if an individual, if, if you have, let's say, for example, fifty percent of your group gets to what's called silver status, which is five thousand points, then you're, you're eligible for a four percent credit. Now, we in our office have Humana, and we hired a girl that'll come work with you, that she's our corporate wellness coordinator, she got to that silver status in a month. So, if we get everybody, Humana will come in here and get biometrics done, we'll work with everybody so they can do their health assessments online, and as they do that, so I think staff is pretty committed that we can very much easily get you to that point where all the employees are in that silver status, so at least now, we're able to control the rates for next year. So, that's, and then along those lines, one of the things with Humana, with their data, Bart, correct me if I'm wrong, about how many millions do you guys have on the books all the nationwide?
Five million in the wellness program alone.
Five million in the wellness program alone, so they've been doing this program for eight years, and what they found is that individuals that are engaged in the program, well, first off, if we do nothing, medical inflation is gonna go up fifteen to seventeen percent in three years. So if we just sit here and do the same thing that we're doing, that we know that the cost is gonna go up, period. Now, what Humana has found in their studies over the last eight years is that rates go down, have a swing, they go down ten percent, so we're, I mean, not rates, claims, so you're looking at about a twenty-five percent swing in your total cost, thereby, once again, reducing your opportunity for increases. So, I'll get off my box. I probably answered more of your question than you wanted.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm just confused. You buy insurance, you use it, and because you use it, your premium's gonna go up because you use the insurance, I'm sorry.
Same thing with...
It's the same thing with cars, yes.
Yeah. It's like homeowners all over.
I just gotta say that.
Yeah.
As long as you know, you're good.
Yes.
All right, any more questions?
That's it.
All right, I make a motion...
Favor of the council?
I'll make a motion that we can, we consider an act on the selection of, oh, of Humana for our health insurance plan.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the final item I have, counsel, tonight is setting our tax rate for next year, and selecting our public hearing dates. As of right now, we're looking at keeping the exact same tax rate as last year, no increase, just flat out rolling it over, and we wanna set our public hearings for the September fifth meeting, and then doing a special meeting for the eleventh as a second hearing.
September the fifth?
Yes.
Okay, because it has it on the fourth here.
It would be the, the fifth.
Okay. On the agenda, it's the fifth, but in November, it's the fourth.
Yeah, because we moved the meeting...
Yeah, we moved the meeting to the fifth.
So we're, the motion is to set the public hearing...
The tax rate, the proposed tax rate the same, and setting the two public hearings.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we keep the, the proposed tax rate as the same, and the public hearing date for September the fifth and September the eleventh.
Correct.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
During those hearings, we do need to let people know that the state is raising their tax rate, that it's not us.
Well, now we go to development services. Consider an act on awarding bid to DRC Emergency Service LLC for disaster debris management removal and disposal services.
We have Kat and Lynn here to present on that one.
Counsel, this is emergency management debris removal contract. We currently have a contract with DRC, but it's not a standalone, we piggybacked with Port Aransas with their contract. It's been about a two-year process to get our request for proposals and get our proposals back. DRC was the only one that returned a proposal to us, it's very much like the contract that we already have in place. I believe in your packet, there were some blanks, and we had those filled out, I'll let Kat talk about that just a little bit.
The only changes to what you have in your packet is that the entity, City of Aransas Past Texas, has been put in, the effective date we put is January first, two thousand and eighteen. Our current contract does not expire until June of two thousand and eighteen, and we thought that January being safely, not in the middle of hurricane season, would be a good date for renewal. And then we included a provision that was included in the RFP that stipulates that there is an automat, it's good for one year with the option for automatic renewal every year for four years. It's exactly what we have in the piggybacked contract with Port Aransas, which FEMA doesn't like for us to do anymore, which is why we're going for our own contract.
And we do have representatives from DRC, if you have any questions, Paul, Chad?
Do I have any questions?
Is there a price on here?
There is not a price on here.
Yeah, what was the amount of the contract?
We pay nothing if we do not use it.
And we have, and I have copies of these, I can provide for counsel to review.
Okay.
Okay.
Leave one with Fernando.
We did go through and review the cost estimations based on the previous ones. Some are up, some are down. Nothing unreasonable. It's based off of both inflation costs as well as FEMA requirements and regulations that they have gone through. But we've looked at it, and it did not, nothing was exorbitant.
Typically, we would use this only after a disaster has been declared. And if we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's and fill all the blanks incorrectly, FEMA would ultimately pay.
His back.
Ah, okay.
That's why we have to go through this process to have the contract established before a disaster. That's what FEMA requires for us to get reimbursement.
The use of this would be something that is just totally so large that not just locally, but county and the state really couldn't give us what we need to recover. And that's what we'd call DRC and to clean up our mess.
Okay.
Favor of the council?
I make a motion that we award DRC emergency services for debris removal in the event of an emergency.
I second.
On her favor?
Aye.
Do we go to consider an act and propose agreement with Mobile LLC for use of the city's right-ofways for network nodes?
It's a company's called Mobility.
What are nodes?
Yeah, what they are are small cell nodes. We do have a representative here from Mobility who can speak more into, in more detail and answer more questions. I just wanted to say they have submitted, what they've submitted are plans for colocation on existing power poles. There is some construction, some addition that would be needed to it, but these, this is the second set of plans they've submitted. Both Mr. Wells and myself have examined them, and they do appear to be, they look good, they're in compliance with our new telecommunications ordinance. But if you would like, the representative can answer any questions you have about the, what these small, small cell nodes are for.
I have a question. You said it would be located on the utility pole?
Yes.
Is that where we get service? Do we have to get any approval from any of like AEP or phone?
They've already been in contact with AEP.
And we have that in writing already, that they've agreed to that, or?
I do not, but before they get permitted for these, we will.
Okay.
I think she wants to say something.
Yeah, please do.
Good evening, my name's Katie DeSheller, I'm the permitting manager for Mobility. To AEP, we have contracts with AEP to be able to work all over South Texas. So I deal with them from the entire coastal bend with AEP. So I have a copy of the agreement that I can share with the city. That's not a problem.
Okay, I just want to make sure on that.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
What, what is this service?
Okay, so we are a telecommunications infrastructure company. So we build the telecommunications for the providers. So AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, any of the major carriers, we provide the infrastructure for them. And so we, I think, proposed this originally almost a year ago to the city for new, new poles. And then the city put a moratorium in place, and so we went back and thought maybe we would do attachments. And it happened to coincide with your ordinance that you're putting on, so it worked out perfectly. But yeah, we work with AEP, and we put those in the city right-ofway with AEP.
And are, is there a provider right now that you're working with?
Yeah, so this one would be Sprint. We have a contract with them that would, that would help with Sprint. There may be some more down the road.
Okay, thank you.
But that's the only one at this point?
Currently, yes, ma'am.
Favor of the council?
I make a motion that we...
How much would they be paying?
To approve Mobility, the use of the right-ofways for network nodes.
There you go.
It should be in the contract that's attached. Specified in the, both the application fees and the annual fees.
It's a thousand dollar application fee, and then five hundred dollars per application covering up to five separate network nodes, and two fifty for each additional. How many will we have within the community?
I believe that it was going to be four, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have the thousand dollar connection and then the five hundred, because that'll cover up to five. So we're talking fifteen hundred dollars is what we're going to get for them coming in.
Okay.
But they only have one, they only have one carrier at this point.
A big incentive for this agreement, why we, we push for this hard is, I don't know if you guys are aware of the Senate bill that was passed, that will be coming to effect on September first. But it basically gives, takes away the right from the city to, to maintain their right-ofway. And I'm sure the city attorney can, can add to that one. But this incentive basically gives you guys a little bit more, a lot more, because with that Senate bill, other companies can come in and only pay you about two hundred dollars. And we, we want to do an incentive to, in good faith, work with the city and, and move forward.
Is this a good thing for the city, Del?
I couldn't say. I'm just impressed with the whole issue of such a brother financial part is good for the city. That doesn't do anything. I don't see anything negative.
The negative is the amount of money, fifteen hundred dollars. That's not a whole lot of money.
What's the Senate bill?
As far as an inspector, I can't determine monetary, I don't see anything negative issue with it other than, what do you see financially?
You had a question, Senate bill?
What, what is that?
Yeah, what is the Senate bill?
It's Senate Bill ten zero four, and I can send Cat some more information on that. But basically, it allows telecommunications to come in and use right-ofways. So at a much lower fee than normal.
So the city doesn't have the right to set our own fee for, for you coming in and using our right-ofways?
No, ma'am.
And I also have some stuff from TML has been submitting legal updates regarding this, and I can also get the TML releases forward as well as the rides. It's been very hotly debated for the past...
I remember it was, it was part of the training, they brought that up. Yep.
Well, Carrie made a motion to approve a while ago.
I second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Consider an act on a request from Mark Marlowe for city assistance on utility line extension, right-ofway improvement, and great age improvement for proposed RV park on North Avenue A.
Is Mark here?
Is he here?
Mark's not here.
On this one, staff will recommend not to participate on the water and sewer. That's developers' responsibility to extend their right-of-store to Public Works, and we have water and sewer at that point already. And then the, the issue with the ditch on Myrtle Street, if they're draining off into it, it is their responsibility as well to upgrade it or do maintenance to it, based on what they're going to be running off. The only thing I can see maybe participation in would be the road between Public Works and them, as it, we have the five acres behind us, that that would benefit us as well. And it could be an agreement that they provide the material and we pave it, since we have the equipment. But that's the only thing that staff would recommend.
That's, that's exactly the notes that I had as well. On the road, is that, that's on Aransas County, correct? And I think, is it Aransas County?
I think it's still in San潘.
Is it San潘? Okay. I was, I thought that was, I didn't know where exactly the line was. I knew it was closed. Okay, all right. Okay, well, yes, I, I'm in complete agreement with Fernando there. The drainage ditch, though, is that not?
That was created a while back by the county to mediate some flooding in the area during a big storm. It hasn't been maintained. We had the county try to get them out there and clean it, but it's not an actual ditch, it's a roadside ditch that ties into the main ditch off of Thirteenth Street. They are planning to use their detention pond onsite as their main detention, but they'll slowly get it into the system using that ditch. And once they get their engineering calculations, they should determine whether that ditch is sufficient or not. And I believe that they're going to impact it, they have to do whatever to maintain what they're going to be discharging from there.
So yes, to helping them with the road. They continue with their own water and sewer improvements and ditch excavation?
Correct.
Okay, that's good for me. Anybody else?
Is that a motion?
Oh. I make a motion that we approve Mark Marlowe's...
No.
No.
No, 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 we don't approve.
That we deny and just go by this, whatever the staff recommends?
There you go.
Just participate in on the paving, they provide the material?
The material, and we provide the equipment and the labor, yeah.
Yes, that's my motion.
There you go, that's her motion.
Did we get that right?
Did she get that?
She's wonderful.
I'll second.
Your motion.
Who's second?
I second.
Second, she did.
I did.
On her favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we go to consider an act on amendment to the City of Aransas Past Code of Ordinance, Chapter nineteen five, Parks and Recreation, Section nineteen, camping permit and fee schedule.
That's my last one, I promise. The proposed amendments would be more specific about the regulations that the city would impose in order to allow for permitted camping specifically on the causeway. Right now, the way that it's worded, again, we have enough ambiguity there for there to be issues with being able to enforce the length of time and the health and sanitation. These proposed amendments would, one, separate the types of camping permits between the type of camping habitation. And so if a person gets a permit for tent camping, it will only be allowed for one to seven days, once a month with a limit of three per year. And for RVs, it will be allowed for longer, because where they will, if they're permitted and inspected as the amendments require, then they would have the proper sanitation. That would, we retain the provision that if a person or a group could prove that they were from out of state, that they could get an additional two permits per year. One of our main intentions is to try to keep people from treating it as a place of residence. We want it to be camping and not a place for, for the dumping and for the, the long-term camping. And it also just puts more specifically, like we have, it currently has that if you had, that issues of health and sanitation can be regulated by the building official, which, you know, is good, but we wanted to have some more specifics that our staff that could go, like specifically code enforcement could go out, point to, say that is a listed violation, we're revoking your camping permit. But again, it's specifically the time for the permits, and also closing loophole, the way it was worded previously, a person could come in and get permits sequentially. And so if you wanted to get a one ninety-day camping permit, you could, then you could come in, get a thirty-day permit, then get a seven-day, a seven-day, and extend your camping time out. So this would just restrict it to only the three per year with the provision for the out-of-staters. And it also has a provision in it that specifies anyone listed on the camping permit are going to be submitted to the same time and number of permit restrictions. So you can't rotate out the people in your group in order to keep the same group of people camping long-term.
I have several, many, many questions about this.
Yes.
Many, many questions about this. First of all, without proper designated people within the city taking care of this, all of this can be written down in ordinance, but without proper, somebody designated within the city to take care of it, it's all hogwash anyway. I, I, the tent permits, the one to seven days is, is fine. Recreational vehicles, seven to thirty days, I absolutely do not agree with whatsoever at all. Ten days, maybe, seven to ten days at a time? If, if, somebody's going to be out there with a recreational vehicle for thirty days, again, we have got to have proper people out there regu, taking notice of, of these. So I feel like as a city, we need to hire somebody specifically for this purpose. Thirty, because obviously, eventually, that just adds up, and they, if they're going to be out there that long, they need to be in an RV park. They don't need to be on the side of the road with a, with an RV.
Yeah, it currently allow, currently as it stands, it allows for the thirty days, it allows up to the ninety days.
No, I, I agree on these regulations. I agree it needs to be completely regulated better. But until the city designates a specific person, which is something that needs to be added to this, is, is what I think.
Yeah, it currently falls under code enforcement in the building department, and they do have someone that goes out there regu, on a daily basis to inspect the permits.
Daily basis.
Yeah, and so right now, the, I know that it's been between the permit technician and the code enforcement officer, and they've been working in conjunction with the police department as far as issuing citations when they find unpermitted campers. One of the main reasons for this was so that those staff that, that are doing the inspections would be able to have a clearer, when the, they're telling these people why they're not allowed to be permitted, what the, have the ordinance backing to do so. And at the beginning, when they get permitted, to try to prevent some of the, some of the people who get, go out there with their, their RVs, they, they do not resemble RVs anymore.
Right.
And so that's why we, we kind of pulled from a floodplain ordinance, the provision that they have to be roadworthy, licensed, inspected, so they'd have to bring it by so we could look at it. So we do have staff that are working toward this, and it's a, it's a big job that they're, that they're working on.
Should this go under Parks and Recreation?
It's, it's currently, the, the camping fees and permits, that's where it's currently listed.
Okay. But, but the, the permits is who's regulating it or taking care of it, or?
Yes, the building department.
Okay. I do not agree with the ninety days at all. I don't think any RVs or people in tents should be out there for ninety days at a time.
I think that the, the original intent of allowing for the ninety days was for our winter Texans who come and camp on the causeway. But that is something that we've looked at and been curious about.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know.
First of all, an RV or a motor home, they don't carry enough water or have a large enough tank to hold ninety days, nevertheless thirty days.
Thirty days, right.
And in addition to this, and you don't want them to go, exactly. And in addition to this, I would like to see, if at all possible, a refundable deposit, just like we do with the park. Because I know when we go up to our daughter's house, she lives in Past Christian, if we want to go and have a big bonfire and camp on the beach, we have to pay the, pay the permit fee, plus we have to put a hundred dollars down, no, I think it's twenty-five dollars down, to have the bonfire. And then the next morning, as long as everything is cleaned up and there's no waste, there's no trash, there's no anything, that money is refunded, she can go right down to City Hall and they'll rip up her check, or, you know, they send it back. But I think just having it open like this, people can leave, and we're still cleaning up their mess, and I don't think that's fair to our city.
We can say send it back for review.
I think it has to be reviewed.
Mr. Wells and I, Chief Landry, have all been working on this, but it falls under Mr. Wells' department.
Currently, we have our permit technician going out each day, and I do agree with you, there's some requirements there that I really don't agree with. I agree with you, and so the time period that they are out there, I think is too extended. It's a hard, very difficult situation of tracking.
Right.
The code enforcement and our staff in the building department have taken a lot of considerable time from their normal activities to pursue going out there, making people clean up. I think that would be a good thing to put into the ordinance.
Yeah, yes, which, what, what... Yeah, yes, what, what you were saying.
Okay, any other discussion?
I, I, I think the ninety day fee, I think the nine, no one should be out there for ninety days.
I agree.
I think the seven to, I think it should not be seven to thirty days, I think it should be seven to, seven to ten days.
How about seven to fourteen, which is exactly two weeks?
Seven to fourteen days, yeah, because there's no pump-out stations out there.
And I don't know where the pump-out stations are, because we have been called by the chamber, we have a pump-out that the city owns at Redfish Bay Boathouse, and we've called, have been called by the chamber if we have motor homes in town that want to pump out, and we have been told by the city, absolutely not, it's only for the boaters, and that we cannot accept a pump-out from a motor home, so where are they going to pump this out?
There is a lot of them that are telling me that they are going to Port A to, because there are facilities over there that they can go to, or they're waiting until they leave to go to another area, and there's a lot of stations that do provide that services. I don't know of any that we have here within our community that a person can go to and do the dump stations, but they are saying that they are containing that and taking it to when they go to other areas.
Chuck?
My knowledge, in, in talking with some of the campers out there last year, there's some of them that will go to Port A, there was one group that had a portable tank and a pump that they would pump their blackwater tanks into and then put that in the back of a pickup truck and carry it over to Port A to one of the RV parks over there that charged a fifteen dollars for a dump, excuse the language.
That's pretty funny.
I've also been told by several of them that in the alley at the Chamber of Commerce is a pump-out station.
But it doesn't work, from what we understand.
Does it work?
That's what I heard.
I've never heard that.
That's why the chamber was sending them over to Redfish Bay, and I don't understand, a motor house, a motor home, why can't we just charge more for a motor home and the city get that money? You guys invested in that pump house.
The source of the funds that paid for that pump-out station were Parks and Wildlife funds, and they were designated for the yachts.
Yeah, okay.
And you don't really want to have another road across your property, you may not want another road across your property to the pump-out station, which is on the far side of the building.
I understand that, but I hate sending people all the way over to Port A because maybe it's a little bit more convenient for them to stay over in Port A.
Typically, what they do is go out in, in the flats, out of sight, dump it in the weeds.
Thanks.
Yes, that's why we don't need recreational vehicles out there.
Why would we stop using the one at the chamber? Because there's nothing wrong with it.
I heard it didn't work, Rosie told me it didn't work, that's why she called me, to see if they could use it, and I said no.
They told her she couldn't use it, the city had called her, because I remember that, that was like, three years ago.
You know, Janet Mayer, the, the reason we wanted the extension is there's about three to five snowbirds that come down here every year and they're parking right there on that Harbor Island, and when the police department was doing code enforcement, that was a function that we would focus on, if there's a nuisance deal or whatever, we would deal with that, but I would also do checks, and I still occasionally do that, and I work with Roy and his group, when we see something, we go back and forth as to who's going to address it, but like I said, there's like three to five snowbirds that love that area right there, it's like they have waterfront property when they're here and then they leave, we've never had any issues with those individuals, and that's the only reason really for considering that extension is for those snowbirds.
Boy, I'd like a waterfront lot for ninety days for a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
For three to five people.
Does anybody know what a normal campsite would cost per month?
Before, before these current regulations that they have that are changing, that, that we're proposing to change, before that, it was like you could only camp out for three, for three days if you were fishing, that's pretty much it, that was, that was all, but we were dealing with a lot of people that want to camp, there's a group that comes down with two RVs on a weekend basis, we always see them way out in Harbor Island flats, where they'll set up a campsite, two RVs next to each other, and then they have, they connect them, they build a roof, and they all party out, but they're always here coming from Victoria, they love this area, but it's a weekend thing, they stay for about four days on an extended weekend, and then they go back.
Cynthia Voskis, one thousand three West Roads, and I just wanted to, when I did the citizens ride along, because a couple of years ago, and that's one of the thing, one of the officers went out there, and if they have a code that they can enforce, if there was a, he actually drove me out there, and I didn't even realize it was part of Aransas Pass, and he says they, they have the opportunity to kind of go and ask for a permit, but if there's no wording that they can enforce.
Yeah, and the officers, what we're really focusing on with these ordinances is, we're trying not to run off the people that want to have, you know, camp and enjoy the scenery, but on the same token, we don't want, like, the town drunk, you know, opening up a residency, or the last guy that we had out there that had an RV, a broke-down dismantled boat and a, a truck that was not working right, nothing registered.
Yeah, I think these need, I think they need to be extremely tight.
And that's what, there, there's been some, some, it hasn't been very clear amongst all the groups that are, that are focusing on this problem, and that's why we all came to the drawing board and we're all working together on trying to revisit the ordinance and write it in, into the favor of all parties considered. So I mean, if you want to write out, I mean, we would just be displacing three to five people, but like you said, we do have places to where they can go temporarily set up camp for their RVs.
Right, a lot of these RV parks are already booked, they won't be able to find a place.
I know that there's some that are expanding, like Country Via, Country Village, I went to their ribbon cutting or whatever with the chamber, and they just opened up some more areas, they've got vacancies, there are places they can go if they really research it here in town.
What I would say with all this discussion, I just, I would say let's table it, make a motion to table it and send it back for discussion.
I, I just, yes.
I agree.
Yeah, I just, I just think the seven to thirty days, thirty days is too much, and the ninety days, they should not be out there for ninety days, that one just needs to go away.
What, what do you think would be the best term, so that way when we bring it back to you, it's covered?
I'd say seven to fourteen days, because that's two weeks, the first one.
Period.
Well, you can do three per year, you can do forever.
Yeah, and just completely take off the ninety days. Yeah, seven to fourteen.
It's going to take forever, so that's just.
That's.
Okay, I think we can do that right now.
And maybe we do a one to five day, or one to four day, because that way people can get the long weekends.
Right.
And we give them more per, per year, but they can't be.
So the snowbirds can't go to the state?
So you can't do four, five day, for a twenty day stay.
I will tell you that, that weekend group from Victoria, they didn't have a permit, and they had no way of getting a permit, because they come down on that first day, well, the cities usually close, like on a four-day weekend, that's when I would see them the most.
Yeah.
So they didn't have a permit, we gave them a warning, told them you need to get, but I mean, they're clean people, they're not tearing up the area and stuff like that, we don't want to really make an issue.
Why can't we sell them a permit when we go, and, oh, you don't have a permit, I have it right here, and it's going to be X amount of dollars.
I don't, I don't have that capability, I don't like my guys handling that money either, we always usually direct it to dispatch, everything's on video and we have a written ledger, I don't really like it out in the field. Now, there, there could be other ways, maybe we could look at either Quixote, where they could go to, or even partnership with HEB or Stripes.
The chamber, they're open.
Get the partner at HEB.
But, but then you run into the problems too with these derelict nuisance cappers going there saying, I need to buy a permit for the weekend, or whatever, and now he's going to open up his little dump site or whatever, and one campsite that we found out there, it was a meth lab.
Oh, great.
Yeah, the only problem I would have with the HEB and the Stripes permitting, I, one of the suggestions is that we be able to inspect the RV and make sure.
Yeah, and, and that's very important.
Let's send it back.
Okay, go right here. They're, they're, unless it started closing, they start open from nine to noon.
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
Saturday.
When did that start?
Uh, they've been doing it for a little while now.
Not very long.
That's where we started, part of that downtown room.
Yeah, they are, they're, they're starting opening on Saturday, just till noon.
We'll brainstorm, I think, right, and figure something good for you guys.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to table it.
Oh, yes, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I guess it's my turn again, I'm going to drag this one out for about an hour and a half. All right, so, these are the stats. These are the stats for July, I will tell you, we're, we're pretty much on par with the numbers, again, this will publish online, if it's not already published online. As far as highlights, I'm just going to go down to the highlights. Patrol, we had to down a couple of units, they're getting too expensive to fix, or just have a lot, a lot of problems that we don't want to tend to no more, they're high mileage, but we're making up for that, you guys keep improving the cars, we're getting new cars as needed. Nineteen applications for emergency detentions, that, those are mental health situations, I will tell you, we have a high number of mental health occasions, and another thing that I want to talk about on mental health is the Sandra Bland Act, if you can remember, Sandra Bland was a black female that the trooper was kind of harsh with roadside, took her to jail, she committed suicide here in Texas. Well, the Sandra Bland Act goes into effect on nine one, and probably sixty percent of that act talks about how to deal with mental health people. I will tell you today, we're pretty much already in compliance with that, we've advocated mental health over criminal prosecution now for the last several years, so we're real good with that. And that is, the other thing is Eddie Garza, having them available, I've had Eddie Garza sitting on patients where I would have had to have an officer for sixteen, eighteen to twenty-something hours, sitting in a hospital on overtime, has been a godsend, so I appreciate council giving us the approval on that as well. Crashes, pretty on par there, when we go to CID, we ran a search warrant in Ingleside on a suspected heroin dealer, we made a couple arrests, three arrests there actually. We arrested a lady that had struck a US Marshal's vehicle and then fled, not the vehicle to run into. Unique case, they, we assisted the DEA locally here with an LSD investigation, you'd think the sixties were returning, but no, we did find some LSD, it was a good hit that they did. Captain Pierce had an event where he spoke during the chamber luncheon, some of you may have been present there, captain always gets rave reviews when he speaks. And that's pretty much it as far as the highlights, again, everybody can go online, they can see all these stats in detail, and next month I will have some good updates as far as racial profiling and stuff, we've been doing a lot of updates online on that in the interest of transparency and, and making sure that the service we provide is blind as far as race, sexual orientation, stuff like that, but we had an audit done recently, passed with flying colors, and you'll have that on your next report. I'll get that hour next time.
Now we go to citizen comments. Citizen comments is intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda, please limit limitations to three minutes. A recording is made of the meeting, therefore, please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address.
Oh, I got one thing I'll bring during this. I'm very sorry, we have a new officer in the group here, Adon Cruz, we stole him from TAF PD, I think they had to close the doors now, they got no, no, I'm kidding. But he comes to us, he's sharp, he's loving it so far, and I wanted to introduce him, my apologies, Adon.
Welcome. We'd like to just see you in here, no, nope, nope.
So we go to executive session for Section five six one point zero seven one, consultation with city attorney, Harvard Lees, Captain Bateschek, Section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with city attorney, Harvard Lees, Aransas Pathway, and we'll be back.